Welcome to this meeting of the Galt City Council. We're returning from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, council's in closed session this evening on existing litigation and there's no action to report.
Okay. With that, we will reconvene to open session and call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Here.
Councilmember Hewer?
Here.
Councilmember Campion?
Here.
Councilmember Powers?
Here.
Mayor Cruz?
Here. If you could all rise for a silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we get the video statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be webcast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting will air Friday, March 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, March 19th at 9:00 a.m. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Okay, moving on. Do we have any agenda approvals, additions or deletions from council?
No.
Seeing that, we'll move on. I understand we have no presentations tonight. That's a first. Do we have any public comment? I'm going to read the public comments statement, please.
The clerk?
Sorry, wrong one. That wouldn't have been good.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
And we have Al Baldwin.
Good evening, you all. Wonderful council up there, happy faces, most of you. My name is Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt.
Al? Al? Could you turn your mic on? We're not hearing you.
Coalition kept down.
There we go.
And you can't hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Well, now I get another five minutes, right? I wanted to just come here and be positive because you may have some challenges later on, so I figured I'd start the meeting off with a little bit of positiveness. This Saturday, a lot of people are looking and we're going to have an extravaganza, which is amazing, a lot of fun. It's going to start at 9:00 a.m. in the morning and go to 3:00 in the afternoon. And we're going to have an Easter parade, we're going to have fun and games, we're going to drop an egg, I think still in the motion, off a very high fire truck and give an award to somebody who drops that egg raw and doesn't break it. It's pretty high up there. So, we have some engineers that are going to be working on that, I'm sure. And your kids are going to have fun, we're going to have sack races, Easter egg hunts, a lot of vendors are going to be there, a lot of freebies are going to be given away. The Character Coalition gives freebies all the time to these people that come over there and it's just wonderful to be very positive with them and happy and the kids love it. You're going to see a lot of action. And if you're wondering how to get to Galt, if you're up north, you just come on down south and take the C Street exit and turn right and just keep driving until you can't drive anymore. It's very close to our town, it's an old town. And if you come the other direction, do the same thing, only turn left off the freeway and go over the freeway and go west, young man. You're going to enjoy this wonderful day. It will not rain. I've requested personally 70 to 75 degrees with maybe three mile an hour winds, so definitely you're going to have a very comfortable visitation if you do get down here and see it. There's plenty of parking, it's no charge. Why don't you just come on down? It's just so much fun. You're going to go away smiling, your kids are going to love it, it's for the kids mostly, but parents got to bring them. And you're going to enjoy the food we've got, it's some real special food down there. There's any questions you want to learn about Galt or the surrounding area, the Historical Society will be able to answer any of your questions for you. So, we're looking forward to seeing you. If you come on down, look for the Character Coalition booth, I give you a button and it's going to be a positive one. Thank you.
Hey, Al?
Thank you, Al.
Did you mention the pancake breakfast?
Oh, I did, Barbara, because I wasn't sure of the time. Last year we had it and the youth put it on, the youth council, and I think it was like 7:00 in the morning then and it was at, oh, Astralita?
Yeah.
Astralita. So, if you do like pancakes, last year they were extremely good. They're not the flat old kind, you know, they're very thin. These are nice, thick, wonderful pancakes and they're, if you're coming down C Street, so you can't drive any farther, just stop when you get to the end, turn around and go about 200 steps and on the left-hand side you're going to find out pancakes and there's people there. We even have a car show, it's by the car show usually. The pancakes are extremely good, they're low calorie, the syrup is wonderful, it's very liquidy and it's very tasty. So, come on down, you're going to enjoy it.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the information consent calendar, do I have a motion to approve?
So, move.
Moved by councilmember Campion, second by Vice Mayor Payne. Do we have any discussion on the matter? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. We have a 5-0 vote. Moving on to community development, the annual 2030 Galt General Plan and Housing Element. Progress report for 2015, Mr. Stewart.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is our annual report on the Galt's general plan. It's pretty much a routine matter that we have to bring to the Planning Commission and then to the city council on annual basis and then we move that off to the state for their, I guess their record-keeping for lack of a better term. So, just a real brief presentation. What this report does is it reports on the status of each of the general plan elements and then reports on progress that we, the city has made in implementing the goals and policies within the general plan and also the progress in meeting our fair share of our regional housing needs. Just briefly, the general plan contains seven mandated elements or chapters and this is a list of them and the years that we adopted them. The general plan elements are, or the general plan itself, with the exception of the housing element, can be as basically as long as we want it to exist. In the case of Galt, it's the year 2030. However, the state mandates that a housing element be updated on a regular basis. We are now in an eight-year cycle from the year 2013 through 2021 and our existing housing element was recently approved in February 2014. This basically shows you an example in the report of what the implementation program would look like, how we report on each of the measures and then the status of each one. And as you saw in your report there, we've got quite a few pages because it does deal with each of our elements. With regard to meeting the, our regional housing needs, the state mandates that we are supposed to at least zone for a certain number of extremely low income, very low, low and moderate income units. It doesn't mandate that we build them, it just mandates that we at least have land set aside for them. Because we have a recent housing element, because we're just now coming out of the economic doldrums, we haven't done a whole lot of development here in the city, the, all of the residential development that you have seen within the last couple of years and continue to see is within the moderate and above moderate range there, so we haven't built any affordable housing units at this point. So, right now we have a total of zero on those, on the books there in the report. I do want to mention, this report was actually given to you at about the same time that the Planning Commission was meeting on it, so during the Planning Commission meeting, they did unanimously recommend approval of, or moving the document on to you this evening. However, there was one error that they caught and that was with regard to the discussion of policy HE, which is Housing Element Policy 3.12. We had inadvertently said that it was emergency shelters and it's really transition and supportive housing that needed to be discussed. And so, I put the correct language there, that our new development code that was updated last year does call for transition supportive housing in our residential and mixed-use zoning districts. So, that was the only clarification that the Planning Commission had made to that report in front of you this evening. And with that, that basically concludes the report and if you have any questions, if you have to answer them, please.
Questions from council?
I do have a couple of questions. My concern is the fact that we have not made any progress on the extremely low, very low, et cetera, housing requirements. And I know that you explained that we don't have to build them, we just have to have the land available and zone for it. And I know recently we've, we're looking at adding quite a few more homes to be built and as far as I know, none of them would fall under any of those categories. How does that affect our standing as far as housing? Or does it?
Well, those are good questions and you're accurate in your assumptions that with regard to, again, the requirements of the state is that we set aside land, that we don't necessarily have to mandate that the units be built. One of the problems with affordable housing, besides just the fact that it's always a political hot potato, but is that with the loss of redevelopment, most jurisdictions to encourage affordable housing in the past use redevelopment as kind of a carrot and they were able to help a developer offset the cost of providing affordable housing. And unfortunately, with the loss of redevelopment, we don't have that carrot anymore. Another way to mandate it, but definitely a much bigger policy issue than we could discuss this evening, is that certain cities, for instance, one that I used to work for have what they call inclusionary zoning, which means that they mandate that X number of units in a development be set aside as affordable units. And, you know, some of the cities, for instance, when I worked for, did have some funding availability, again, to help the developer offset, but that's not always the case, it's just, you know, the developer would have to basically pay for that. With regard to the rest of your question, how does it affect us? Well, again, we're not mandated to actually provide that housing, but at this point, when HCD looks at our next Rena cycle in 2020, 2021, they could possibly, you know, basically manipulate our numbers, you know. There's not really a threat there, but it's just that, you know, we have an X number of units as a base that we have today, that I showed you earlier, and then, you know, we could potentially have additional numbers added to that. It's kind of hard to tell until we see what happens because we do have another, you know, six years or so, six or seven years before the next cycle and, you know, depending on how the market works and what is developed here, I can't really guarantee what would happen, but it'd be something that HCD would look at at that point.
I think that, I know we have six years, but I think that the threat would be that we could lose state, some state funding if we don't make progress eventually in those areas through SACOG, for example.
You know, honestly, I wouldn't be able to say yes or no to that right now, but there are always, you know, as HCD continually fine-tunes the housing element requirements and whatnot, you know, two cycles ago, for instance, there were cities that would try to sell off their, their housing needs to other communities. The last cycle, it was four years, but so many cities took so long to get that element adopted that, you know, HCD kind of went back and fine-tuned with the reward that you have, eight years if you get your housing element done in time, for instance. So, they're always fine-tuning and, you know, they potentially could, you know, if it looks like things are not happening, come in and acquire something like that. On the other hand, perhaps they could also come up with some funding and some, you know, against the carrots to help, you know, the cities.
Then my other concern is because we're not building anything for low income or low, low income, that the existing housing that we offer is, a lot of it's quite old and by the time we get someplace for these people to move that's better, I'm concerned about the housing that they'll be living in. I think there are some cities that have like a multifamily ordinance where they go and check periodically to see that it's safe. I think that might be something we might want to consider in the future because I know especially over here on the west side, we have some apartments. You list one, I think at Sunset is at risk, but I'm sure there are others as well that we need to be concerned about. So, I guess that's where I'm going with this. I'm concerned that we're not offering anything in those categories of low income and what we do have is aging and I'm concerned about the living conditions and the quality that the people will have to live in.
Okay.
And as far as the at-risk, I think, Tony, maybe you should elaborate on that because I don't think it necessarily is targeted at the condition of the building, it's whether the owners of the property wish to maintain those at an affordable level because they receive a subsidy. So, that's really what the at-risk, I think, is.
But also know that we've had some, at least one apartment in this past year, that their subsidy expired.
Right.
And so, they elected to get out of that and the people living in those apartments had nowhere to go.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's part of my concern about providing something in the future. And I think it's something that we need to keep an eye on because obviously if these people that own these low-income or affordable apartments can get a better deal by opting out of subsidizing, it looks like that's what they're going to do.
Any more questions from council? I don't see any speaker sheets on this from the public.
Make the city manager want to say something.
Yes, sir.
I certainly can add, you know, some of that, either, we're not in the boat alone. All cities in the state, you know, don't have this funding, you know, from redevelopment that we used to subsidize a lot of affordable housing. There's not a lot of money at all coming from the state through other, you know, federally-funded programs like the Home Program. You know, one time, you know, Home was, you know, administering, you know, 20, 30 grants a year to cities and they're probably down to about five, you know, four or five at this point. So, you know, it is a, it's an overall problem. The other, you know, with the inspection, you know, you know, we can kind of take a look at that, you know, with council direction, but inspection, you know, there's multifamily housing inspection ordinances that, you know, some cities have adopted to kind of look at their existing housing stock to keep them up to date, up to code, so they don't deteriorate and dilapidate over time. And that's, you know, something else that, you know, we can take a look into, but there's certain costs to that, you know, to the property owners or certain staff time that's involved, you know, with that as well. So, there's, you know, a lot of different avenues that we can explore and we can, you know, spend a little bit of time taking a look at that and then come back to the council if that's the direction.
That would be good.
Okay, at this point, we don't have any public comment. Do I have a motion to accept it as it's been amended by the Planning Commission?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Hewer. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. So, we have a 5-0 vote on that. Moving on to the hot seat tonight, tonight. Adoption of proposed water rates, Mr. Winkler.
One second, I'll get this up. Mayor and council members, this item is a continuation of council's consideration of the adoption of proposed short-term water rate adjustments. And the proposed water rate adjustments are necessary to avoid an annual revenue shortfall of approximately $325,000 per year that would result if flat-rate customers are transitioned to the current metered rates. The rate adjustments are also necessary to satisfy the Proposition 218 requirements that each customer class pay its proportional fair share of the cost to provide water service. And this item was last discussed on January 19th. Council directed staff to provide a billing comparison, in addition to our mock bills for our flat-rate customers, to provide a billing comparison to existing residential and commercial customers. And this was accomplished through participation in a council chamber of commerce, excuse me, a chamber of conjurors, one more try, Chamber of Commerce luncheon presentation in January and the mailing of comparison bills to metered customers just a week and a half ago. And that billing comparison was to, sent to all customers, whether flat-rate or metered rates. The only exception being we do have a couple dozen customers that are still having billing problems with the new meters and without any usage data, there's nothing to provide a comparison bill. That's the bad news. The good news is they are in our Group B and we're working out those issues as we speak and they will get at least two comparison bills with the remaining mock bills that will be going out. So, we believe that all metered customers have received a comparison bill as requested. At this point, Mr. John Griffin will step to the mic and will provide a quick overview of how the proposed water rates compare to surrounding communities and how we propose to transition the implementation of the new buildings.
And of course, we'll stress the word "quick." The next two slides, you'll see, one is how we compare with our neighbors and the following slide will be how we compare regionally. The rates you see here are for our commercial customers and it compares our proposed rates to the city of Lodi, to Sack County Water Agency and to Elverve Water District. And at various meter sizes and at various usage patterns, you can see that even with our proposed rates, we still have the most competitive rates compared to our neighbors. And if you read the B, you may have seen this chart and it's an excerpt from the February 18th, 2016 edition of the B and it provides a regional comparison with roughly 15 or so water purveyors, with Placer County being the highest at slightly under 100. And we are shown as the lowest at 23 and change and that's based on our current water rate. With our proposed rate, with a single-family home with a one-inch meter, roughly 17 units of water usage a month, our rate would be 33.53, not quite the lowest, but as you can see, we're very close to the lowest and not only are we competitive with our neighbors, we're competitive in the region.
John, on that slide, it shows Galt at 23.38 per month. But isn't the monthly flat-rate charge 28 and change currently?
What they're showing is based on the current metered residential. So, for the thousand or so residential customers that currently have meters in place, 500 got a meter in place.
Those were, those-
This is based on existing customers in 2013 for the-
So, that was just the 900?
Correct, yes. This does not reflect what our flat-rate residential customers are charged.
And what was the, was there a period of time or was this just a one month or do you know?
This, according to the table, it is based on a, just a one-month cross-section with equally of 17 units of water consumed for that month.
17?
Yes.
The metered rates were very, very low in Galt then. If the average is 13 is what the rate is based on and this is based on 17, then it was, they'd be paying significantly less than what the flat-rate payers were paying.
And should the meter, the metered rates be adopted tonight? This is just a quick description of how the rates will be implemented. For our metered customers, that will be reflected in their next bill and they will receive that bill in June, are our existing flat-rate customers in category A, those that had their meters installed prior to July 15th of last year. It will also be reflected in their June bill and they will see a one-month charge with their new base rate. Also, they'll see 15 days of usage from May 1st to May 15th. In addition, because our current, because our flat-rate customers are billed one month in arrears and one month in advance, they'll see a credit for that one month in advance that they had paid previously. And for our category B customers, the flat-rate customers who had meters installed after July 15th, same process except that will be reflected in their October bill. Again, one month, 15 days of usage for September and again, they'll receive a credit as well for what they paid in ahead for their current flat rate. So, tonight, our recommended action is that you adopt the resolution approving the proposed water meter rate structure. And as mentioned previously, it would go into effect as of tonight and along with that, we would have annual inflationary adjustments and those would be reflected in March annually through 2020. And again, just to summarize, I know we've heard, we've said it before, we're kind of a broken record, but the message you want to make sure we continually convey is that the revenues will not exceed our cost of service. And then anytime we have a rate change, we are required by Prop. 218 to send a notice to our customers at 30 days in advance. So, with that, that speedily concludes our presentation and we're here for any questions you may have.
Thank you, John. Counsel?
Do we have money that we put in reserve for capital improvements?
Yes, the rate structure shows eight or nine capital projects to be constructed over the next four years and those were, top of my head, I can't remember all of them, but that was part of the cost of service rate study.
You don't happen to know how much our reserves are at this point, do you? For capital improvements?
We're in the midst of budgets tonight, we've got so many numbers in our heads. I believe that the current number is about a million and a half dollars. Mark, does that feel about right?
That's it, approximately.
It's a moving target. We have fund balance as of the beginning of the budget year. We haven't done any fund transfers that I can recollect, so that should order magnitude to be our current fund balance. That's kind of my best recollection, I don't have the number in my head.
So, the money that we have in reserves, are we also, I could laugh by saying this, getting any interest off of that money or how does that work?
My understanding is that we earn whatever rate that the city's bank rates are in their investment portfolio and that those get applied to all fund balances.
Yes, that fund would be earning its share of the interest and, yeah, it is kind of low right now.
So, if we get to the point where we have built our capital improvements and there's money left, what happens to that?
Well, as was pointed out, we cannot raise rates beyond that which our cost of service would justify. That includes capital improvements. This is sort of a short-term stopgap rate adjustment with a 32% mandate sort of being a game changer for us. That was not anticipated when the rates were adopted or when we started the metering project. I think it, sort of in hindsight, the meters are a blessing and a curse, a curse for the rate payers who are feeling some angst, but a blessing that we now have a tool to deal with drought situation on an individual customer basis. The, we looked at a five-year outlook for operating costs and planned CIP- The, we looked at a five-year outlook for operating costs and planned CIP projects in developing the rate recommendations. And so the plan is to bring this after we get a year or two of usage, after we see what's going on with the drought and any mandates that accompany that. If we get relief here in the next few months, that might change the picture again, once we have some existing usage. We do have an annual opportunity to look at this. When we do our CPI, we'll do a memo to council typically in January indicating what the CPI is and what our recommendations are. That is an opportunity for council to request that that be brought for formal discussion. Otherwise, we'd be bringing back to you a recommendation probably within two years in any event, once we're past the drought and get meters implemented and sort of usage stabilizes with the newly metered customers. We'd be in a position to take a longer-term view of, you know, whether our rates are still appropriate, or whether they should be lowered, or whether we have capital needs that might dictate a further rate review.
So part of the base charge is part of that budgeted for capital improvement reserves?
As part of the five-year operating outlook, they did look at planned capital projects that are within our five-year CIP, and built those in to the starting reserve, revenues needed, what the expenditures would be for operating and capital, planned capital projects. But we did not look at future, long-term, potential capital projects outside of five-year horizon.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Along those same lines, we had discussions earlier this year on this subject. And I know I had requested, and I think council concurred, that once we got the meters on board, we were gonna, you were gonna come back to show how we were in terms of being on target with projected use and revenues. And that was within a one-year period, not waiting the full two years. Not necessarily to make a change, but to at least advise council where we are. So I just want to make sure that we still plan on doing that.
If that's your pleasure, we're happy to do that.
I think we already discussed it once. I mean, I just, I didn't hear you mention it tonight, so I want to make sure that that's still something that will be coming back.
Right, and we will, maybe I missed your cue there. As part of our annual, when we look at our CPI index adjustment, one of the certifications I have to give you is how we're doing with our rates. I would add to that memo this year would be a first glimpse at year one of how we see this going. That would sort of be a supplement, as I think the best way to probably advise you where we're at.
And when does that come out?
Typically in January.
Okay.
We would typically put a 30-day notice, where we'd actually communicate with you before the end of December, what the October CPI calculation was, and then we would have that become effective March 1st, and we'd put out a notice in the January 1st billing. So probably prior to January, we'd be coming back with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Okay, I have comments from the public, starting with Ralph Cortez.
Good evening, Mayor Cruz, councilmembers. I'm a three-year resident, and I just wanted to come up, and this being an hot topic in the city, and actually, when we went through the stage, the various stages of water conservation that was mandated by the government, and dropped down to all the cities and all the other agencies, I got scared. I got real scared that we were gonna have a serious water problem. So I went ahead and let my front yard go brown, and quit watering. So since then, I went ahead and applied for the state turf rebate, and it was a long, tedious process, but you had to really be persistent. Anyway, the application went through. I replaced approximately 2,300 square feet of front yard with drought-tolerant plants and landscape, and adhered to their criteria. And then I reached out to Deputy Winkler's, Director Winkler's staff, to help me better understand what was gonna be happening pretty soon here with all these rates. And I was impressed. His staff helped me. I called them numerous times. The director himself actually helped me go over some of these numbers. At any, at any rate, just to try to keep this, at least my side, short, I've seen a pretty good change in the water usage that our household has. The mock bills were helpful to me. I did some calculations. I'm pretty sure that this topic's gonna be all over the board with different type of households and usage, and this isn't a cookie-cutter subject. So I just wanted to come up here and thank the director's office for helping me better understand this. And I've seen a drop, if, in my situation. The first one was 78.85, the second one was 85.80, and then the third one was 43.18. Again, this is my own situation with our own household, and I realize that this water conservation, along with what's gonna happen in the future, kind of resides on, rests on what we're doing here. And I realize that water is a precious commodity. I certainly feel for the individuals in Flint. I'm, I don't, I couldn't imagine how that could have happened. I think that the director's office, his staff, has spent numerous hours, you all have spent numerous hours. I'm sure the further public comment on this topic is gonna be all over the place, but I just wanted to say, I appreciate everybody's work, the director's office, and the countless hours that you guys, I'm sure, have struggled with this one, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
How long did it take you to get your grant through? You said it was difficult?
It took about six weeks.
That's not bad. That's not bad for government.
Yeah, it took about six weeks. They came back and made me remeasure. They didn't like some of the pictures that I had submitted. Basically, I kind of jumped the gun and got started on a side area of the house, and even though that you could see the turf was in a pile and it was brown, they rejected that section. So the only other comment that I can make to that was that they did fulfill the full, they gave me the full amount. But then I got an email that I was gonna be W-9ed or W... So essentially, I was taxed on that money. But it still was helpful, was a sizable project. I want to say that I did choose a Galt landscape company to do that huge project. I want to keep all of that type of stuff in my own city that I can. But it was, you had to stay persistent, and you had to stay in touch with them. There was no phone conversations, everything was through email.
I just want to say that you ought to be commended for all your efforts. You're the kind of citizens we like to see that are, take an interest in the city, and we appreciate that.
Okay, Jean Twak.
Good evening, council, mayor, city staff, residents of the city of Lodi. I'm not gonna be as pleasant to listen to as my predecessor. In 2003, I purchased, let me start over, in 1995, I purchased my home that included a $1,000 fee for a water meter. 2003, my wife passed away, I asked for a meter to be installed, as it was only me and my dog. I was told by city staff at that time that if I wanted a meter, I'd have to go buy one, get it installed by a licensed plumber, and deed it back to the city. My comment was, I'd already paid for it once, I'm not going to pay it for again. So you've had my $1,000 since 1994. You've had interest draw on that. I asked for a meter in '03. We argued the point for a while, that's 13 years now, and I've, since I asked for the meter, I've gotten my three sample bills, and I thank you very much for them. I've taken the $37.96 showing for the meter charge off that bill, and added back in the $5.94, which was the meter charged for people who had meters during that same period of time. I've done the math, I've extrapolated out the three months, the three sample bills, stipulated that out to 13 years, and I'm out close to $4,500, okay? I don't mind a cost-of-living adjustment or CPI adjustment. My CPI adjustment for COLA, for my social security, my military retirement is zero. It was 1.2% the year before, okay? So we're looking at a 700% increase from the 5.94 to the 37.96. I understand there's a cost involved that should have been planned out in more, bigger increments further back, maybe, but poor planning on the city council's part or the city management's part does not constitute an emergency on my part at this point in time. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Darren Mitchell?
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. I'm here more towards the timing of this increase. At the end of this year, we're looking at a Sackville County tax for transportation. We're also looking at two school bonds, and with this tax, or I don't call it tax, but with this increase and the two bonds, if they pass, myself, I'm looking at probably about $500 a year. You're talking $2,500 over five years, $5,000 over 10 years. I know for myself, it's not as big of an issue with the school bond, because they are severely needed, but there are people that we all well know that will vote with a pocketbook this November, and if they've already had this increase, now they may have to be in a situation where they're either gonna choose one bond, zero bonds, or two bonds. So the decision you make tonight may affect the schools, and I sincerely believe that, because, you know, at this time, money's not abundant for a lot of people. And then you also have that fourth bond with the GO tax for the county. My own base rate jumped seven times, which is quite a bit in my eyes. But I just urge you to consider the effects of this on the other bonds in the area, because frankly, they're just as important as this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't see any further comment from the public. Discussion from council?
You got something?
Sorry. Sir?
Did you fill out a speaker sheet?
Good evening, council, mayor, people of Galt. I'm Richard Martin. Been an owner in all of Galt since 1990. I've kept track of every bill I paid to the utility district in this town. My question is, if we're not going for increase in revenue, how can the mock bill that I got for January be the seventh-highest bill that I've ever received in this town? When it's historically the lowest water bill of the year, which only means that it's gonna go up from this point on. And I can give you the exact figures. There are three, or there are six year, six bills that are, that were higher. August of 14, August of 13, October of 13, August of 10, August, October of 10, and October of 9. So I've been a resident here since 90, except for two years. I can tell you, back in 2004, our utility bills were around $100 average for the year. In 2015, that averaged, I had come down to 1.72 for the year. The year before, and the year before, and the year before, it averaged about 1.80. My new cheapest bill for the year is 1.95. I can say, only six months, six bills previously since 1990 that I paid more than that amount. And you're telling me that it's not going up disproportionately? I don't understand that.
I think staff could probably provide some explanation. You already, you've had a meter then, correct?
I've had a meter at two different addresses in this town.
Right. And I think that's...
And when you put in auto-read, it's supposed to save money, because you're reducing labor costs.
Correct. And I think, I think what I'd like to have staff do is explain the difference in the base rate. The base rate that was established back when your meter was put in was, what, $2 and...
Less than $3 a month.
Less than $3 a month. And the prob, one of the big problems, like I was speaking earlier, is at the $3 a month, even based on usage, you were paying far less than what the flat-rate customer was paying at the same time.
But a flat rate isn't my problem. I had a meter, and I was metered how much water I used. Flat rate could use twice, or three times, or four times as much water and not pay a nickel more. I've been on meters since 1990 in this town. My last, this water bill that I just got through paying my, my consumption was $8.54, and of course, the base charge was $5. Now it's $31. And as the previous gentleman said, we paid for those meters when we moved in here. Did I get a rebate when they took my meter out and put this new one in?
No.
What did you do with those meters?
Oh, but you weren't charged.
No, but you weren't charged. Everybody else in town was charged, and I didn't agree with that either.
I wasn't charged for putting the new...
You were not charged.
This is $31 charge.
That's part of, staff can explain it, but it's part of the operation. It's your base rate.
I don't, I don't understand, I don't understand how this new bill is the seventh-highest bill since I've lived here since 1990, which is, means it's gonna go up from now on, to higher levels into the 200s. My utility bill will go into the 200s. I've only paid 200 three times. I've only paid over $195 three times, besides the three times I spent over 200. It's ridiculous. And we saved and conserved for the last three years. My, I just like this gentleman, my front yard went dead. I quit watering to save money. I haven't watered at all since last April. Haven't watered at all. I've just watered my shrubs and plants, but not my lawn. And you're telling me that my bill has to go up on average $20, $20, $25 a month? For what?
The, the, I think one of the problems was, is that the rate that they had established at the time, if they were to convert everybody in the city to that rate, I don't think sufficient revenue would be generated, and I think that's what staff was telling us, we couldn't go with the existing metered rate structure. That's why they did the study, to look at what had to be available in order to pay for the water department. Now, I don't necessarily agree with any of this, because I didn't want water meters in the first place, but that is where we're at today.
Well, I came from the state before I came here, and I was born in California, and lived out of state for several years. You did not charge a rate, a metered rate unless everybody in town had a meter. There was no such thing as a flat rate for a few and a metered rate for others. Everybody either had flat rate or metered rate. You couldn't separate it, because it was unfair to the customers. Like I said, I've paid for every drop of water that I've used since 1990, and people in this town with the flat rates could use as much as they want and pay the same amount. And that's the way this town was converting, and it took a long time. I was here when the water tower had the problem with the birds. I was here when you put in the new water tower over by Twin Cities. All of that came out of the existing revenue that you got. All of a sudden, we can't live on the rates that we had. I mean, even with, I can understand we're using less water and we're not generating as much revenue, but to increase the bill by $25 a month is unconscionable to me. That means that's every month, and I was paying those high ones when I was using water, that would have been into the 2.25, and I don't think that's a high amount of water. I didn't use a lot of water. I was very conservative the whole time I've lived in this town on how much water I've used. And now we're being punished, and I don't understand how you need that much more revenue.
Do you know how much your usage fee was on those metered bills?
Seven.
$7?
No, seven, whatever your units.
Seven units?
CCF.
Seven units?
All last year, seven units. I didn't use, and I've got a, and I've got a swimming pool, and I don't use an excessive amount of water. I just watered my shrubs, I let... I let my lawn die. I didn't wa, I used to water seven days a week, just like everybody else, and sometimes twice a day. It's hot here this summer. And we quit. And I, and that's, and you go back all last year from April on, I used about seven or eight units a month.
So, your usage has been about the same?
Yeah, the uses, not, not when I was back in the days when I had all the water I wanted. I used a lot more water. I said, like, like I say, my average bill now, it, well, this is, uh, this one for this was a hundred and sixty-nine utility bill. My water bill was, uh, seven or eight dollars, and I've run between probably, uh, seven and ten dollars all this year, every one of my water consumptions. You gotta wash clothes, you gotta take showers, you gotta cook, and I can remember when we had the arsenic scares, and I had a reverse osmosis put into my house because I can't handle arsenic. And that comes from the tailing ponds, am I not right? Are we getting our water from the river now?
We're actually getting our water from deep wells, but Mr. Winkler, could we get together with this gentleman and explain it?
Absolutely. I'll give you one of my cards, and maybe you could either call or swing by the office, and we'll get your specific address, and we can talk through the issues. Uh, this does illustrate, uh, something that probably for clarity for the audience in the council, uh, when we did our, our, our cost of service study, one of the unintended consequences as we look at whether our rates are proportionally fair among our customer classes, one of the surprise findings was that our existing meter rate was not fairly capturing, uh, the cost to provide residential service to the metered customers. And so, as a class, the, the nine hundred or so existing metered customers were in essence being subsidized by our other customers, and so, we are, needless to say, to be, remain legal, we have to correct that going forward now that we've become aware of that and make that adjustment. And, uh, it was not a big issue before we had to reduce by thirty-two percent, but that just has magnified the concern going forward, and before we move another seven thousand customers to that rate, uh, that would result in a loss of, of adequate funding to operate the water system.
Yeah, how much, is it true, not true that we use twenty percent of the water used in, in Galt is residential and eighty percent is not?
That's a fair approximation for typical residential use.
And so, the twenty percent is probably paying more than the eighty percent.
Not necessarily.
Okay, so you will get together with Mr. Martin?
Give your card. I, I, I understand figures, and I've kept track of every dime I've paid because I've gotten retired, and I'm like this other gentleman, we all got zero this year.
Business cards have disappeared here. Hiding. Got a new binder. Um, you see this gentleman here, he'll get your information, and we'll contact him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything. I was going to let you fall on your own sword, but I wanted to tell, tell you something. To be revenue neutral, you only had to raise that base rate, uh, three dollars and seventy-six cents. So, the vote you're going to take tonight is a phony vote. You only needed to raise it from two ninety-seven, where it was, to seven dollars. But what you are going to do tonight is you're going to raise it from that revenue neutral spot of seven dollars, you're going to raise it up to almost nineteen dollars. It's unconscionable. You don't know what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Mr. Thua?
On a slightly more positive note, the sample bills that I've received have shown the amount of water that I've used, okay? I don't mind paying for the amount of water I use, but I would like to see on those bills is the meter reading that started, the meter reader that ended, and how much that meter reader difference is. All I'm getting is a sample number of units that were used. That's not telling me what I started at, what I ended at. It's an arbitrary number that has no basis in time. My elected bill, my gas bill shows me my prior reading, my current reading, that's bill, the current reading on the old bill is now the prior reading. I get no such numbers on these new bills. All I get is you use that number of units, and this is what it's going to cost you. I don't mind paying for my water. I'm more than happy to pay for my water. As I told Mr. Winkler, I showed him a picture of my front yard. It's brown, the big empty field across from me is green as, as can be. It's, it's like St. Patty's Day all the time out there. It's bright yellow green. My lawn is brown. I've had my sprinklers off since August. I've had two times that the cities come by and told me that my lawn is being overwatered because there's moisture on the concrete. All those times, it was dew on my truck also, so apparently, I'm watering my truck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Do we have any comments from council?
No.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
A motion by Councilmember Hewer. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Councilmember Powers. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
No.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
No.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
No. It fails.
Okay.
Where do we go from here?
Yeah. I'm a little concerned that we've met, we've discussed this issue now numerous times. We've had a rate study. We've shown that the, the flat rate customers are subsidizing our metered rate customers. We're continuing to allow that, so we have the majority of residents in this community subsidizing the nine hundred residents. Our commercial rates were too low. We compared ourselves to other communities. We obviously, our rates, even with the, even with this proposed rate structure, are far less than neighboring communities or anybody in the region. Um, we looked at the sixty-forty split. I mean, the reason that we decided to go with a higher flat rate was because Councilman Campion felt like we should balance and have the least amount of increases to customers as necessary, stay as close to the flat rate as we were, have the least amount of increase to the majority of customers. Yes, the flat rate has to go up for the meter customers because people who've been metered since nineteen ninety, and people like myself or my neighbors who played a flat rate since nineteen ninety, even if we conserved and did everything we could to save money, our rate never, our rate was going to stay at that amount. We were paying that approximately sixty dollars every two months, whatever it is, something twenty-seven, about that, sixty, sixty-five dollars every two months. So, when somebody tells me that at a metered rate, they were only paying a couple hundred a month, maybe a couple hundred a year, I'm like, wow. I, I came from communities that were metered. When I moved here in nineteen eighty-six, I came from a community that had been, and from Stockton, that had been metered forever and ever. I was amazed at how much my water bill dropped when we moved here. From nineteen ninety to now, or, you know, we need to be able to pay our employees, we need to be able to, we're not asking to make money on the water rate, we're asking to stay revenue neutral. This is what, we've paid for the consultants, we've had all of these means, so where do we go from now? Do we go back and we do another white water study that we've already paid for? It's not going to come out any different. At some point, we need to move forward on this and start, because at some point, we're going to go in the hole. We're, we're going to go in the red if we continue, and we have an obligation of, we've installed the meters, we have one year from the time we install the meters to start metering. And we have people now who've had the meters for that amount of time, and we still haven't started metering.
No, and the other thing is, I think the, the hidden thing is, people aren't looking at the hidden costs. We have so many things mandated from the Water Resources Board in the state of California who are, you know, real sticklers for the minutest things, and we get fined, and we, all kinds of things happen to us. So, I, what I'd like to know is, you that voted nay, what are your suggestions for the next move, and what do you think we ought to do here?
I have a question of the staff. When you originally brought your, your proposal forward, it was your own proposal to do a forty-sixty, with forty being the base rate, and I'm assuming, when you did that, you felt like that was going to cover it. Um, but then, it got changed. So, my question back to you is, with your original proposal of the forty, forty percent for the base rate, sixty percent is based on the usage, would that have worked?
Mark can speak further, but just, the quick answer is, any of the percentage fixed versus variable portions, the, the total revenue to be generated would be equivalent.
Right, so if you did the-
With the forty-
If you did the forty-sixty, the dollar amount would be different on one aspect as opposed to the other aspect.
Pay more for the variable portion, less for-
Right, because we have to come up with the same amount.
The flat rate would be less, and the metered rate would be higher.
So-
But the metered rate would be based on your usage. You would have more control over your individual usage.
This, this is actually the problem that I had when we made the first vote, is why I wanted the forty-sixty, and unfortunately, and you're right, Councilmember Hewer, uh, we did go forward with this. The reason why we did the sixty-forty, and I still disagree with it, was we wanted the money upfront. Well, there was no incentive whatsoever for people as far as conservation, so you get charged eighty-seven cents for one CCF, which is what, eight hundred gallons, I think, is what we came up with?
Seven hundred.
And seven hundred, which you pay a dollar for a bottle of water. So, I, I still stand by the, the forty-sixty, and I think it's still, it's going to be more beneficial to the, to the, the user because it's going to reduce that base rate, and it's going to give them more of a chance to conserve and more of a chance to adjust their bills accordingly.
But we do have the majority vote going forward with sixty-forty.
With sixty-forty, the idea there was that you would have less vari, less variability in the actual rate on the consumer. That was the, that was the intent, so that you wouldn't have-
And that was your proposal.
That's correct. So, you wouldn't have wild fluctuations from your summer to your winter months. So, that was, that, that was the whole concept. The forty-sixty, and we discussed this as a council-
Many times.
It was, it was pointed out that you would have much more variation in what your monthly bill would be based on usage, and that, you know, based on the number of persons per household on average in the city, which is like three point two, which is mainly families, it was felt that that would be a better rate to provide some form of stability. That's all it was.
Well, the reason you have a meter is because then you are monitoring what the usage is. That's the reason that we're putting the meters in. So, that should have priority, the usage should be the priority when you're figuring out what, what you're going to charge.
Well, everybody's not reading the medi, meters, and we also have to remember that we are supposed to cut it by thirty-two percent. You think people are going to all look at their meters and make sure all the time they're cutting it by thirty-two percent?
Well, I think, don't we have, isn't it part of our program that you can go and check and see, um, what your, yeah, go online and see what your usage is? As one, someone out there asks, you can do that.
We can. The, the thirty-two percent mandate is on a citywide basis. It's, doesn't propose individual penalties. Uh, the council, one of the options we could have looked at and elected not to was tiered rates that would start to-
Yeah, right.
You know, have that punitive effect, but they would still have to meet a Prop. 218 cost of service justification.
Mr. Clarkson?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to point out something, we'll go a little simpler here. The gentleman who said he uses seven units a, a month, you know, throughout the last year, if he got a billion, a bill right now, whether it was forty-sixty or sixty-forty, it would show the same amount. He'd be paying the same amount. What happens is your, is your base rate drops, your commodity rate goes up.
True.
He will pay the exact same amount, whether it's forty-sixty or sixty-forty. There might be a nickel or a dime difference. We went through this in our charts before, you know, back in October. We went through, we, we, I think we showed a thirty-seventy, and we did the forty-sixty, and we showed a fifty-fifty, and then we came back with a sixty-forty. It's all pretty much the same amount that they're going to pay for that unit, for that, for that seven units. Now, if somebody's using, as, as Councilmember Payne said, if somebody's using twenty units, and they can cut back, then they're going to see a reduction, a, a more of a reduction the lower the base is, you know? But if people are at their lowest point right now, as the one gentleman said, he was at seven units, that's pretty low. Um, he's not going to see any change. He will see that same dollar amount, whether we're forty-sixty, sixty-forty. And that's just in the simple-
The base isn't going to change based on your usage.
No, the, the base will stay, but the commodity is higher. I don't remember exactly, but I think the commodity for a sixty, or forty-sixty was around a dollar forty.
Dollar eighty-seven.
But the commodity is not going to change, like, every month. We're, we're looking at this over a period of time, and if forty-sixty would work, with forty being the base, covering our costs, and sixty fluctuating, why would it, why would it be the same?
Absolute, well, because we're trying to get the same amount of revenue back in based on the water usage that we have. So, we did provide a graph that showed thirty-seventy, and they're all the same, you know, at, at this rate structure. So, we, when some of the discussion was about the forty-sixty and the sixty-forty was, right now, the city is basically an eighty, you know, an eighty-three, eighty-four, sixteen. That are, that are base that comes to us, because we've got to include the-
Flat rate.
Flat rate customers, that's where we are right now. We did a comparison with the other cities around here to see what their base rates were, and they were pretty much higher than the sixty-forty, even at the sixty-forty level that we had. Um, so, so when it was proposed to look at sixty-forty, the numbers didn't change for, for a period of thirteen units or ten units. The numbers are going to change, stay in between, but people do have more control the lower the base is. They do have more control. And then, there's more volatility on the city's end of it, of having to come back and adjust rates.
Well, there's more volatility, there's more volatility on the consumer's side as well.
Absolutely. So, it's, it's, it does, um, it, it's, and that's where the policy came up. We proposed a forty-sixty because we saw people were at a ten-ninety, but that's basically the metered rate, the five hundred. We keep saying nine hundred, it's really about five hundred residential customers, and the others were commercials. The others were commercials. So, we looked at, so when we look at, at the ten-ninety, and we said, well, how, how far can we, you know, how much base? We kind of thought that a forty-sixty might be palatable to the council. We were trying to read minds. But it doesn't matter, thirty-seventy, forty-sixty, every, they're going to pay the same at seven units, at ten units, or whatever, you know? They're going to pay the same. It just changes if, if they can cut back.
Yes.
That's when it changes, is if they can come back.
But the rate isn't going to change. And if the base stays at forty, I mean, I, I guess, I'm not seeing how you get the same dollar amount whether the base is at forty or sixty. That's what I'm not seeing. If your usage is going to, the cost for your commodity is going to be X number of dollars for each unit, and the base is here, I don't see how it can come up to be the same cost.
Well, we, we had a chart that when we did a forty-six, or sixty-forty, we put a lot of stuff, you know, some operational costs and building costs and stuff in the base rate, and we put some electrical and other things in the commodity, commodity rate, because we were looking for a bottom line number to get us so much revenue every year. Now, when, that bottom line number never changes, so when we, when we went ahead and said, okay, let's, let's decrease the commodity, that moves it into the base, but that bottom line number is still the same, so every customer's going to pay the base, or pay the same on that. If customers decide, right now, if our average, we'll just say it's thirteen units, if the customers decide to do ten units and we do a forty-sixty, we will not meet that revenue. The same is, if the people drop down to ten units on the sixty-forty, we are not going to meet that revenue. So, it's, it's always that target to hit the revenue, and how do we balance it? Do we put it in the commodity, or do we put it in the base? And, and when you compare the different ratios, it's all the same at a certain usage. Not many of you are going to see, be able to see this, but what we have here is we had a forty-sixty, a fifty-fifty, and a sixty-forty, and the bottom is how many cubic feet that you use, and the side here is, is the cost. You see that lines real close to each other. It doesn't matter on the initial part of it, and we can pass this around, but I'm just showing that the, that, that it's right next to each other. It might be a nickel or dime quarter apart. or dime quarter apart, but it pretty much tracks itself along here. And, and that is for whatever ratio we do.
And that was from a presentation that was given to us?
Yes, that was a presentation we did in October, and we redone in January, showing that...
You can pass that down if you would like to see it.
Showing that it does not change.
And I wasn't towards then, either.
Yeah, and so, it's just, it's a policy on whether you wanna go for the, you know, whatever ratio you pick, it's a policy, is if we're gonna help, we're gonna do a conservation mode, or we're gonna do a stabilization mode, or anything in between that.
Well, I'm really trying to understand this. So are you saying if the base rate was at forty, you were gonna increase the unit cost by a larger amount than what it is now?
Correct. To meet that revenue requirement that we need on an annual basis. We can't, you know, we can't say, well, we're gonna keep the commodity at eighty-seven cents. Can't happen. That commodity has to go up if the base goes down, to meet...
But that, that commodity is gonna fluctuate with every individual. So how are you predicting that rate cost?
We looked at the water consumption over the past year, and that's how, you know, and we can only predict, you know, we can't, we're not so sayers, we can't tell what we're gonna use this summer, but we looked at the past year and said, okay, if the people keep using that amount of water, this is what our rates need to be.
The idea was you would come back to us in a year, and we would have better data. And maybe at that point, we...
Make it another...
Would make adjustments down, or, I mean, hopefully, we're, we're, you know, citizens of this community have been very good about conserving water during this drought. It has saved us thousands and probably thousands and thousands of dollars in water treatment and, and everything else we haven't had to...
About five hundred million gallons of water.
Yeah.
In one year. It's incredible, it's terrific.
So, they've been, they've been incredible about this. But the problem in my mind still comes back to the fact, and I didn't agree with moving forward on the meters. We had till twenty-twenty-five, we made a choice, there was a choice made by a, by the council to move forward with meters. We've done it. We have the meters now. Customers have paid for the meters. You know, every customer, the existing metered customers got free new meters, because they have paid for their meters previously, so they got new smart meters. The rest of us paid the three hundred dollars to get our meter. I wanna start being metered, because at this point, if the mock bills are correct, my water bill's going to go down from what my flat rate is currently. And I don't, I think if the majority of the community knew that they had been subsidizing all of these years, those five hundred metered customers, they'd be very disappointed. Because basically, we were overcharging our flat rate customers, and undercharging our metered rate customers for twenty years, that those, you know, fifteen, twenty-five year, or whatever, what we're looking at, twenty-five years for some of those folks. That's, that's a huge amount of money that, if I had been being charged less, because I was subsidizing those five, and even those commercial customers that we were subsidizing, even under this, but under the current rate structure, many of our, our biggest commercial user is going to save money. Some of our schools are gonna save money, under the metered rate, under the current rate structure. So even though the base rate's going up, most people are not going to see an increase in their bills. So they're all, and if they do see an increase in their bills, they have the opportunity now to conserve and bring it down to what it, to below what it was previously. When I talked to my neighbors, and when I talked to the community, I heard over and over, I would rather have my bill be as consistent as possible, so I can budget that. We have most of, the majority of this community is living month to month, and they need to know, my bill will be about this month. They don't wanna come into July and get a two hundred dollar bill, because rates, because their water usage went up, because it naturally goes up in the summertime. Yes, it would come down in the wintertime, it would have probably even out in the long run, but they wanna know month by month, so that they can budget. I feel that way.
Well, you know, and the other thing I just wanna say, too, is, compared to all these other cities, we're paying so much less water. I mean, people need to realize that, too. I, I just think, we, when you look at this, you know, chart, and you see what everybody else is paying, actually, considering the size of our community, we have managed...
Well...
The city has managed the water, the water district, or, you know, our water plant, extremely well. Because we're able to meet our revenue at the slowest rate in the area.
Right.
In this whole area, and where wage comparisons are the same. So actually, it's been managed very well.
Yep.
So if, if I may be so bold, we're, our staff here are a little bit confused as to, we thought we were implementing the policy direction given by council, and noticed that to the community, and, and now we're not supporting that proposal, and that's fine, that's obviously, you're the decision makers. But I'm needing some guidance as to, do you wanna migrate everybody at the existing rate, and lose three hundred thousand twenty-five, three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year? Or do you want to look at a different, go back and revisit the percentage?
Why did we do all this in the first place?
I'm equally confused.
That is, that's, to me, is ridiculous. We, how, how many months have we spent on this, and we're down to the, the adoption of it, and now we're gonna start all over again?
It's because...
That's a ton of a waste of money, too. So add that money to three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, that, we're gonna lose.
Every consultant we hire, every fee structure we do is more money out of the water fund.
Right.
Because that's where it's paid from.
Well, I would just say this. I think that we are trying very hard to be, our goal is to be fair to the citizens. Not, not say, well, yeah, maybe our fees are higher or less than Lodi's or somebody else. That doesn't matter to the people.
But that, we've been, this is what we've been working on all along.
Okay, I hear that, and I said before, I wasn't in favor of this when, when the vote went around. And I'm still not, but...
Well, it was three to two in.
But that was just me, okay?
Right.
But I still have the same opinion.
You do.
The other thing that I would say is, either way, you're gonna come back in a year and revisit the situation, whether we were with the sixty-forty or the forty-sixty. Everything is gonna stay the same for at least a year. Then it's gonna be, then it's gonna be revisited, to be looked at, to see if what we estimated was correct, as far as covering the cost.
But the problem is, in a year, if we're in the red, now we've gotta really increase rates to get out of the red, or, do something. I mean, when we passed the sixty-forty, Councilman Campion, you voted in favor of that. So what's your proposal now? Where do we go now? I mean, this is the rate structure that you were in favor of, and now you're choosing, I mean, now you're saying, no, I'm, I'm not in favor of that rate structure. So what do we go back and do?
You need to rewind all the way back to the beginning. In the beginning, it was, I was not in favor of meters. I voted no consistently. I felt, for the reasons in supporting the sixty-forty, is it would provide stabilization for the consumer. That was it. At that time, I never said I was in favor of that, implementing that. I simply said that I thought that was the best rate, if we're gonna adopt a rate. That's what I did.
So, so is your proposal that we just don't meter? That we just stay with our flat rate? I mean, what do we do from here?
Well, we would, we would...
I mean, I agree with you, Kurt. I wasn't in favor of the meters either, but a majority of the council at that time voted to move forward with the meters.
Correct.
I've paid for my meter, you've paid for your meter, and has, has, has all the customers in this community. And now those meters are sitting there, and what are we going to do with them? Are we just not going to meter, and we're gonna stay at a flat rate?
Well, we have to meter. I mean, you know, you have one year from the time, I guess the, and I don't know what the specific timeframe is, and staff can answer that, whether it's the first meter or the last meter, I don't know where this timeframe starts.
One year.
But at some point, we have to read the meters.
Within one year.
And so we will have to have a rate. And if there is no rate that's put into place, it would be the existing rate that is on the books.
And would we lose three hundred, and we'll lose three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars?
That would be the, that would be the one that would lose three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
And I...
Or more.
So if we keep the status quo, we're losing three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
It's gonna have to come from somewhere.
So in a year, that'll be have to be made up, and so then, when the rates bump up a ton, to get out of the hole of the three hundred twenty-five, and get us into where we need to be with our upgrades, uh...
And I understand that those four or five hundred metered customers are not happy that they're...
Nine hundred, it was nine hundred.
Okay. Well, residential was...
It's nine hundred residential.
Nine hundred, okay. So if those nine hundred customers are upset that the base rate's going up, I, I understand that, that, that is the nine hundred customers that probably will see an increase.
They definitely will.
But the other, how many customers that are, that are not currently metered?
Over seven thousand.
Seven thousand.
Those other seven thousand customers should be very angry that they're subsidizing those nine hundred.
Well, I...
And if we continue with the flat rate, that's exactly what's gonna continue to happen. And now we know that that's occurring. There's one thing, when the community didn't know that they were subsidizing those nine hundred customers, now we know that we're subsidizing those nine hundred customers. And as a rate payer, that makes me angry. Because I, I had assumed that those customers were paying their fair share. Because as a rate payer, even if I saved every dime, I, every bit of water I could, and let my lawn go brown, and let my, you know, did everything I could, I was never gonna see a reduction. At least now, under our metered rate, I could see a reduction.
Possibility, yeah.
But I absolutely agree with you. I was not in favor of the meters, but at some point, when the decision was made to move forward with it, you move forward with it. And we try to do the best we can for the customers of the community.
Okay, so we are, we know that we have to have a rate, because we have the meters in, as Councilman Campion just mentioned. So, I don't know. I would, I would be in favor with going with the forty-sixty that you originally did the study on. You have all that information, and then go for the year and compare and see, which we were gonna do anyway. And as someone else mentioned, there's a lot of other things going on in the community, taxes and bonds and the rest of it, that gives us a period to adjust, or gives our citizens a period to adjust.
It's not gonna make any difference if it's forty-sixty.
If we're gonna change to a forty-sixty, then I propose that we go back out and do mock billings again, because people need to know what that looks like, too. We did the mock billings based on the sixty-forty. If we're gonna do a forty-sixty, then we redo the mock billings.
Yeah.
Because people should know what it's gonna look like for them.
I agree.
Okay.
And how much did it cost us to send out mock billings?
No idea.
It's a...
Seventy thousand dollars?
Well, do the whole four, four billings, so how many do you wanna do? It's about, with the printing and the mailing, to all seventy-two hundred customers, we're looking at order of magnitude, about a dollar per customer, per mailing.
Ask people to sign up for online.
Is that the regular billing?
Yeah, that's you.
Hold, please. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and the Galt constituency. Abi Visser Raftellus, assisting with the city with this rate restructuring. To touch on a couple points. The first one, with the forty-sixty, you could definitely do that. That was actually our original recommendation. In doing so, though, based on the fact that you noticed sixty-forty, you would have to go, go through the Prop 218 noticing all over again.
Right.
Because the rate structure is changing. Whenever the rate structure changes, you have to renotice your, your customers. So that's an important point. And then also, you have to rehold a public hearing once again. And that's separate from the mockups. A couple of other items just to touch on. When we first looked at this, we always start with your current financials, and where you are, and where you wanna be. And typically, what we do is, we always want to solve the five-year plan. We want to make sure that you're hitting your ret, reserve targets. If you don't have reserve targets, then we recommend where they should be, in terms of operations, capital. And then also look at where, where are you in relation to those targets? Are you able to meet those requirements? And then, when we, when it was discussed, that we'll just focus just on rate structure, and not revenue adjustments in any way. Projecting that out, before we looked at meter, we identified that, you know, in two or three years, you're gonna need revenue adjustments, irrespective of changing everybody to, to metered rates. But compounding that was, then we extrapolated out the fact that everyone's gonna become metered, and your current metered rates, which we already discussed, wouldn't generate the same amount of revenue they generate today. So that had to be rectified. And the way we rectified that was to recalibrate what the meter charges should be, to come over the same revenue. Granted, it does cause the rates to go up for the, the fixed charge. Whether it be sixty or forty percent, is still gonna make the fixed charges go up. But in, in, you just think about, just the regular rates of monthly bill, if people are paying thirteen dollars a month over a year, plus a hundred and thirty, a hundred and sixty dollars a month over seven thousand, it's really, I mean, you can even just tell, it's not gonna be the amount of revenue that your entire utility needs. Our original proposal actually recommended three percent revenue adjustments, and we presented that. But, because I wanted you to be aware, moving forward, maybe it's not now, but in future years, your most likely revenue adjustments, not really for operations, but because of your capital projects. You know, every utility is very capital intensive. There's so much repair and replacement that needs to be done to maintain your assets. And the unfortunate thing is that those assets, you don't see them. You do see them when, when you hear about the news, when there's a water break, things of that sort. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Our original proposal was forty-sixty with three percent revenue adjustments. We took directions from council, because some of that, most of that is policy. As you move revenue from the fix to the variable, yes, it will give more, more, more responsibility and management from your customers to control their monthly bill, but also puts a higher volatility on the city to then potentially lose revenue in totality. One thing that we found in, in terms of the trend, is a lot of agencies are now racking up their fixed charges because of the drought. Because the worst thing that you want to, the worst thing that happens is, we want you to conserve, and then we come back, and an agency increases rates. When they, when you ask your constituency to do, to make sure you use water efficiently, oh, great, you did a great job, but now we're gonna have to increase rates. So one way to combat that is by having a fixed charge that is sufficient to cover your average daily operation cost. And then your variable rate is covering costs that are, majority of them are avoidable. You're still gonna have fixed costs in your, in your, in your commodity rate, but the more that you put to the fixed charge, the less, the less you're gonna have, the less you're gonna need to recover your baseline absolute needs of staff, and if you have any type of critical necessary projects for your, for your infrastructure. So I think that's just some important points to point, to provide to you, as you determine where to move forward on this. But we'll always be here to assist and, and guide you through that process, and we'll always take direction in terms of policy, where you wanna go.
Well, I think your points are very well taken, and I'm glad that you brought the up, that up about having to redo the public hearings and the rest of it. The other thing, though, I wanna say, as the population increases, does the cost to run the equipment, does that increase at the same amount? Because we do have a lot of construction going on, and I'm believing that our population will increase. So that's gonna fluctuate, too, no matter, you know, no matter how you look at it, there's fluctuation. So will that affect the cost to operate?
Yes, it will. You would end up having, typically, you would end up seeing increased costs. But usually, the amount of revenue that comes in will cover that cost, that additional cost that's incurred. But keep in mind, you also need to look at, are you generating enough, enough revenue to not only meet your operating annual needs today, but are you putting money aside to fund your reserves to meet those targets? Typically, you want to have at least three to four months of, of liquid cash on hand for your ongoing operations as a reserve. And then another best management practice is, based on your, your annual needs of critical capital improvements, you typically want to have at least one, one year's worth of cash in your, in your capital reserve, so then you can ensure that your capital projects are, are moved forward as they're scheduled, and you don't have any issues of awarding contracts, because you have funds available to make those awards. Then you're actually getting the best price possible. So right now, you're, you're currently not meeting those components. But as the population grows, not only do you have to look at, are you meeting our current operation costs, but there'll be increased operations, and you also wanna make sure that you hit reserves targets, that would be part of your overall policies in relation to this Water Enterprise Fund.
Do you think eighty-seven...
Do you think 87 cents is a realistic cost for the water? Is this for a unit of water, 87 cents that you have on this chart?
Eighty-seven cents is-
Yeah, exactly. Do you think that's a realistic figure for that, or?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by realistic. Like, are you, because-
Do you think that's what it costs for that water?
It's a-
For that unit of water, whatever unit you were using to base that on?
Based on how much you, from a policy standpoint, decided to put on the variable side, which is based on commodity, it's a zero-sum game. So that ends up being the unit rate to generate 40% of your total revenue requirements of today. So we can't charge more than that unless you put it as part of your notice. We would have recommended to make it even more than 87 cents. We would want 3% revenue adjustments above and beyond just recalibrating the rates every single year. So then in year five, you're actually meeting not only your operations, but you have net cash available to fund your reserves.
We chose not to do it.
Not to, and you know, that made sense as well because the reasoning behind that was, let's see what the usage is going to be over the next two years. We have a better handle on the actual usage that then will make those determinations at that point, where we have historical data to make those recommendations.
When we were talking in October, we didn't know if we were going to have another drought, a severe drought winter. We didn't know what winter was going to bring for us. And so, or what mandates we were going to get from the government. Speaking of the 218, how many protest votes did we get?
Hundred and twenty.
Forty-seven.
Yeah. Less than 2%.
Less than 2% of the population protested the rate increase. So we are going to- change and redo it all based on less than 2% of the population having, so we basically could say 98% of the population did not disagree with the rate. Well, it was noticed. 2% on a 218 vote, only 2%, less than 2% of this population protesting it is actually, I don't know how to put this, not outstanding result. But generally, you have a much higher rate of people protesting what could possibly be a rate change. We had a very low, and it was well-publicized, lots of comments on Facebook, lots of, I mean, mailers were sent out. I mean, we noticed, we did the newspaper, we did the entire population. So I don't understand, now when we come down to voting for the rate that we've told everyone that we were moving forward with, we now turn around and say, no, we've changed our mind, we're going to go with something else. Where were we in our being honest and upfront with the community on what the proposed rate study was? We've had much smaller decisions than had this entire room filled. We've now had two, last two meetings about this. And yes, we have some residents that have some concerns, but there's lots of residents that were perfectly okay with what was happening.
And lots of residents saw their bills go down. Pardon? Lots of residents that saw their bills go down.
Absolutely, myself included.
Myself included.
Can I say something?
I'm available with any questions if someone else wants to-
Mr. Mayor, if I could talk about options, if it would be appropriate.
Go ahead.
You know, I'm not sure at this point that I get a sense that there's any kind of consensus on the council as far as where to go. But we certainly did get here tonight following council direction to do the noticing, to prepare the council for the adoption of the rates that are before you this evening. One of the options, you can change your water rates whenever you want. You just have to go through the process. One option that is available tonight, even if there is a majority of the council that ultimately wants to be at a rate where there's a 40/60 split, is to adopt the rate that is before you this evening and then give council, or give direction to staff to move forward with an additional process to initiate the process to implement a 40/60 split. From our perspective, the worst decision, the worst thing that can come out of this meeting tonight is no decision. To leave things the way they are, to make no decision, and to give no staff direction. And that seems to be where we are heading. So I just wanted to make you aware of the fact that one option you have is to adopt the rates that are before you this evening, the 60/40 split, the proposal that the council directed us to notice. And then after that's in place, whether it's tonight, whether it's next week, whether it's next month, if there's a better proposal, a better way of doing things that you want us to look at, that you want us to notice, we haven't lost that ability, we have not lost that option.
Excuse me, council, I don't mean to interrupt, but we need somebody to talk on our side. And the thing that you're forgetting is, you constantly talk about revenue neutral. That was your whole theme. Well, revenue neutral is, what is it? It's $3.97 increase. That's the whole secret behind the whole thing. And you're not even seeing it, you're not looking at it. You don't go from $2.97 to $19 when you're looking after revenue neutral. Revenue neutral would be $2.97, excuse me, $2.97 increase. So how do you get from $2.97 increase with revenue neutral, and then you justify it by going up to $19?
You're talking about the base.
The base rate, right, exactly. The base rate, that's what everybody's talking about. And when you have that percentages that increase every year after year after year, if you have that base rate up high, pretty soon we're going to be paying in five years $21 or $22 on the base rate. The thing that you need to get in your head is revenue neutral. Revenue neutral. What does that take for us to get there? Revenue neutral.
Okay. You know, I wasn't for this previously, and I expected to be the only one not for it tonight. And I was the first to say I was surprised to see that it failed. So then I will say this. We are going to review these rates in one year. Is that what we've planned to do all along?
Yes.
And at that time, we can compare, you know, how we've, how we come out as far as being revenue neutral. And if we are not revenue neutral, there's no reason why we can't return the money or adjust the rates to cover that. I do not want to see us wasting taxpayer money to go through the whole process of another public hearing as well as noticing and doing mock bills. So I would say, okay, this is where we are, we've invested in it. No, I wasn't for it. I don't want to see us waste the money. So I would say, let's stick with what we have, revisit it in one year. And I think that's going to be fair to the citizens. If we find out that we're collecting more money than we should, then we'll adjust the rates back. So I would, at this point, I would move that we approve the existing proposal with the 60/40 rate.
With the stipulation to come back in one year.
Absolutely.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Payne and second by Councilmember Hewer.
Mayor, before you call the vote, I just- Before you call the vote, I just want to clarify that the motion is to adopt the resolution, which includes the effective date of 3/15/16 and the annual inflationary adjustments. And that has been modified to come back for a reexamination in one year.
That is correct. I have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion?
Wasn't this what we were going to do all along, was come back in a year?
Actually, the initial was two years, if I understand correctly, but-
I think it was a year or just a little earlier.
We have a motion, can we have a vote?
Okay.
Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
No.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
I may have a real problem with this because I know we're going to be over the top when it comes to charging. I'm still going to say no. Pass is 3-2.
Would you tell me this story? Yeah, take care of the meeting, Mark.
I got it. Thank you, Ms. Thaw.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any communications?
No, I just want to say one more thing before I move on. You know, I think we tried to do the best thing that we could do under the circumstances. I don't know that any of us are satisfied with it, but at some point, you got to move on. And I think that's what we tried to do. So I stick with what we did.
Thank you. Comments by staff? Start down here, Mr. Winkler, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I do actually have a comment. I have some good news to present to the council this evening. The city has received the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal period into June 30 of 2015. And for that, we received this beautiful plaque, which contains, you'll see, we got this in 2013, 14, and 15. And as you know, I've only been here 11 days. So this wasn't my doing. We have, you have a terrific finance staff over there. Greg Lucusha, am I saying that wrong?
Greg.
Greg, our deputy finance director, is primarily responsible for getting this comprehensive annual financial report out. And I know, absolutely, we've been getting this award, the city has, since 1996. We've gotten it every year. And also, I want to appreciate Michelle Neely for all of her hard work as our accounting manager. And the rest of our staff, you know, this couldn't happen with all of the rest of them, too. You have a very good finance team, and I just wanted to let you know and appreciate them.
Okay. Awesome job.
Glad to have you, too.
Thank you.
Not a whole lot, other than to remind everybody about our workshop next week on Eastview, Wednesday from 2 to 5.
Looking forward to it. Mr. Winkler?
Just one quick update. We do now have the February conservation numbers, and we're losing ground on our 32% current target. It will change in March to 29%. But with an unusually dry and warm February, we did only achieve 12.5%. So there's more work to be done. We're hearing signs. I think it had to do with just unseasonably warm weather and a lack of rain for the entire month. So I think we had a, the base year was considerably different. And so you're kind of fighting with that, you're comparing to a different number in 2013. That does not put us behind on our cumulative savings. We did achieve some significant savings in June through November. But we've been nip and tuck since then. This is the first month that we really dramatically deviated. So we're watching clear closely, see what happens in March. Now that we're getting a lot of rain, we should make some progress back. So we do need to remain vigilant. Whether we enjoy our rates or not, we do need to conserve water to avoid further ramifications down the road. And we'll continue to report on how we're doing with that.
Do we have any new changes from the state as far as they're adjusting it from 32 down?
We are getting an automatic 3% climate adjustment. Staff are also working with numbers through finance and other departments to determine if we might also get a growth adjustment. Or we get a credit for any new rooftops since 2013 to offset the math. We'd get a potential modest credit for that. So we're running those numbers, and we'll find out shortly whether we're going to get an additional percent or two, but it won't be a great amount. Based on this last week's rainfall and some of the Northern California reservoirs jumping up, they're starting to have discussion of they might be able to relax these some if we get a good continuing March and a good April rainfall total. So it is a moving target.
Thank you. Mrs. Thaw? Mr. Solis? Chief Drummond?
He's going to defer to me. Actually, I kind of recognized earlier this evening that this is Chief Drummond's last meeting with us. And I wanted to acknowledge that and really thank him for working with the city. I think his time with us since April, almost, he's pushing a year now. Really, you brought a great benefit to our community and to our city. And I personally want to thank you, helping me out, coming on board as a new city manager and his guidance. And a lot of discussions that we had on the police department really has assisted me. And I think you'll be missed, but we do appreciate his time here. And I think Steve probably has a few things to say as well, since-
Well, Steve's-
He's been a little bit longer than me.
Well, I would just want to say that we brought Chief Drummond on under a little bit of false pretenses because their indication of him was that he was going to be here, and to his wife as well, was that it was going to be about a six-month gig. And we really do appreciate his perseverance in hanging with us for the additional half a year to get us to this point where we can do the transition in an orderly manner. So, and I really enjoyed working with the chief during the last year. He's just an awesome guy, and I really think he brought a lot to our organization over the last year.
I do have a couple of remarks now for council and for the community members who will see this. I didn't know much about GALT when I came here. And I want to tell you what a pleasant experience this has been, what a great community you have. It's one of the, I think, secrets in the region. It has the lowest crime rate of any incorporated city. And the quality of your executive team and your staff is outstanding. I've worked with a lot of different managers and department heads. You have a high-quality team, and you have a very sound police department, a very good police department. I came in especially to assess the department and look at, are there issues? Are there things that, you know, are going to jump up and use the term bite, you know, the city? And there are not. Are there things that can be worked on? Yes, and those are documented, and I will be passing those along. So it's just a great community, a very good department, and a real sound team, except maybe, you know, a little low spot was when they had that interim city manager person. But I understand it was emergency circumstances and the best we could do at the moment.
I would just like to say thank you, Chief Drummond, for your leadership. And it's been a pleasure, and best wishes, and don't forget we exist.
Councilmember Campion? Councilmember Powers?
Yes, I want to re-bring back discretionary funds since I messed it up last time, please. And I do want to thank Chief Drummond, and it was nice having you here when you were here. And we're really looking forward to the extravaganza this weekend. It's always a fun event. Looks like the weather's going to be great. And have a good time. It gets better and better every year. So if you haven't made it, you have to come out to it because it's a really fun day to get around and talk to your council members, talk to people in the chamber, and get to know all of your neighbors. It's a really fun day.
Thank you. Councilmember Hewer? Vice Mayor Payne?
The extravaganza is going to be exciting. So please come out.
We end on a pun. No, no worries. Chief, thanks a lot for all your work, and a special thank you to Mrs. Drummond. Steve, it's official, you only have one hat to wear now. Again, come out to the extravaganza, it's a lot of fun. No cost, other than if you want to buy food there, but all the events for the children, totally free. If they want to have pictures of the Easter Bunny, we've got a photographer out there ready to go. With that- With that, this meeting's adjourned.